I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the City of Eugene Planning Commission to order today. As we do with all of our public meetings, we're starting a little early today this time, however, but we do open each meeting with a period for public comment. Anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment is requested to fill out a green sheet to request to speak, and I have one so far from Mr. Bill Aspergen. Bill, would you like to come forward?
Do you want me to do this now before, because you're going to talk about industrial lands needs later?
We're going to talk about industri-- is this regarding industrial lands?
Right.
We're going to roll right into that, so it'll be fine to do it.
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, okay, whatever.[51.62][51.62](Laughter). In three minutes, I really can't cover all the things that need to be covered and are all my bullet points, so I've got a handout which I know you guys want more stuff to read, so-- but it's not too long, so maybe I can just pass that around to commissioners at any rate. I was on the econo-- I'm still on the Economic Development Team, at one point was a co-chair of it, and so I've been on it since the beginning. I think the first thing I want people to understand is that the expansion of the UGB by four to five, six hundred, however many acres it is these days, that was not a consensus of the Economic Development Team. We certainly never resolved that difference, several of us didn't feel it was proven. The second thing I think you need to understand, and I'm not going to go over every bullet point, I'm just going to kind of hit some highlights. As we looked at the land around the UGB, the Economic Development Team, we really didn't see a lot of land that was good for industrial purposes. We found maybe two parcels out by the airport that totaled 130 acres or 140 acres, and even that had constraints, almost everything did. So I think you have to realize, and I think the city has to realize, that we don't have a whole lot of industrial land near or adjacent to the UGB. And one of the things I'll talk about is regional planning. So there really isn't a lot of land to expand the UGB to. Adding 400 acres to the UGB probably isn't justified based on what we've seen so far and very likely isn't defensible. I think the key is if we're going to push it out, we somehow have to justify it. A lot of emphasis has been put on the Joint JEO's Regional Prosperity Economic Development Plan. One of their things is create 20,000 new net-- new jobs in the next-- by 2020, the next eight years. Even what you have in your AIS here doesn't really consider that that's going to happen. They go with 40 or 60 percent of that. I think the JEO document is, at best, a vision and not a plan. Eugene still has no specific economic development goals, and I think that's one of the things that will make it difficult to justify moving the UGB. Basically, there is land for industrial needs within the region. I think there's, in communities like Springfield, Glenwood, Coburg, Junction City, Goshen, and there's probably some others, there's industrial land. I think what needs to be done is that we need to do a better job of regional planning, and there is an effort called the Lane County Livability Consortium that's basically funded by the feds, and I gave some websites there that you can look at to find out a little bit more about that. But I think an effort needs to be made to do a little better regional planning if we're going to actually try to squeeze 37,000 jobs into someplace in the next 20 years. The ECLR report states, and this is a quote, "The assumptions used to develop the baseline analysis assume Eugene's future development will be similar to past and current development." This was accepted by the city council in April 2010, basically based on information from 2008. I think my main takeaway on that one is the future isn't going to look a lot like the past, and I think you need to consider some of the other things which I mentioned and a couple of bullet points there. So I-- basically, what I think you folks need to do is, as you listen to the presentation on industrial-- industrial land needs, ask some hard questions and see what-- see what the answers you get are, because I think there's some question as to whether there's enough land, I think there's question as to how much, how many large pieces of property are actually needed. So that's all I wanted to say. You can go ahead with the OBO.
Thank you, Mr. Aspergen. Mr. Paul Conte.
Good morning. My name is Paul Conte. I live at 1461 West 10th Avenue, and I just wanted to point out to you that the hearings-- the public hearing announcement that went out on the code amendments for-- I forget the date, in December, listed the building height transition as just being applicable in the Southern University area. I know that's the way that staff had initially proposed it, but I heard at the-- at your previous discussion, some interest from Commissioner Hleddik and others to look a little broader, and certainly I've encouraged you to do that. Just as a technical matter, it could possibly be a subject for appeal if you were to try and take action, make a recommendation on that in a broader scope. Is because Planning Commission has to go to council, maybe not, but still, just in terms of fair play for the public, it would be good if you want to-- if there's any thought of considering a broader scope for those building height transition amendments that you have the notice reissued so that it indicates that that scope might be broadened, and then you'll be out of the woods on it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conte. At this point, we'll open up for final deliberations for OBO Enterprises' appeal. I would also like to start by offering a covering statement for some ex parte communication that took place between Mr. Conte and myself after the last Planning Commission meeting, which dealt largely with the Orchard Street appeal. But since Mr. Conte is actively involved in both of those, I'm going to err on the side of conservatism here and offer that the conversation started with him offering to make sure I knew how to locate some particular information that he thought I should read, it then wandered into a little bit more, we'll say, detailed and perhaps inappropriate conversation. I wanted to mention this now and offer, confirm that it does not affect my orientation or my judgment in this action on OBO. I will make a similar statement before we start deliberating again on the Orchard Street appeal also. So with that, Steve?
Okay, so on Thursday, we sent out a draft final order that had some of the requested changes, and I was going to quickly touch on those changes and then also go to some requested changes from Commissioner Duncan in the final draft. So the primary changes, so we didn't have legal review of the document also, so there was numerous minor edits to it in regards to that, but the kind of the major changes came that the Planning Commission requested from last time, and those were on-- start on page nine of the final order, and that was to include the hypothetical R3 parking proposal and show the R492SR zoning in comparison to that when stating why the increase is not that great. So that was kind of if you go to the top paragraph on page nine, that was a change we made to the final order. And then the other change we made was on the last page, and that was a request by the Planning Commission that we include a statement that--
Page 13.
Oh, excuse me, on 13. The very bottom paragraph there. And that was that we include a statement that we make it very clear in the final order that the Planning Commission was able to rely on the concurrent site review in this case, and that because of that, we're able to get to approval of the zone change of R492SR. And so I hope you had a chance to look at that.
I'd just add, it's also the same statements on the-- toward the bottom, page 12 with the refinement plan text.
And then if there's no comments on that, some of the requested changes, so we had a request from Commissioner Randall, and I was going to also address your other request, but I was going to kind of go to small fixes first. He had a request on page nine, there was a typo between the number, and there was no separation between the two words. And then on page four, we had a request from Commissioner Duncan in the start of the second full paragraph on page four to strike the words, it says, "Nonetheless, it is noted here that the subject property"-- I mean, requested that we strike the words, "it is noted here that," so it would just say, "nonetheless, the subject property has already been designated for high-density residential."
Where is that?
That's on the very top of the second full paragraph on page four.
Okay.
And then there was another request for the paragraph right above that, at the very end of this, the first sentence, it says, "R3 to R4/92SR," and Commissioner Duncan requested that "it" be replaced by "the policy" to clarify what "it" was referring to in that sentence. And then the other requested change was on page 11. And if you turn to page 11, on the first full paragraph under sub-paragraph B, maybe one, two, three, four, fifth sentence down--
Fifth line.
Or fifth line down, right after, you see the underlying WURP text on appeal involving a similar zone change, and his request that we describe the old zone change to be specific that it was R4/82SR, to be specific about what that zone change did. And then, jumping two sentences down, add in to clarify that the 1994 Planning Commission and hearings official erred by simply concluding-- to clarify, it wasn't the current Planning Commission and hearings official. So those were the kind of cleanup edits that we would, I guess, have been proposed to the draft final order.
Steve, I'd like to also point out that under Section 2 of the order, the record before the Planning Commission, based on the discussions that you had where you did make some references to attachments B, C, and D of Mr. Conte's testimony from November 1, we went ahead and drafted this so that by voting in favor of this order with this text in here, you'll be taking official notice of those documents. That wasn't specified in the previous draft, but since you did talk about them, you need to either take away that conversation or take official notice, and this is our proposal.
What page is that?
Page 2, Roman numeral, Section 2.
Okay, thanks.
And then we also had a request from Commissioner Randall regarding the-- regarding adding 107 bedroom maximum to the final order. And so I kind of would talk about how that would fit into the final order. It was currently the-- we do have the two overlays, the 92 and the SR. The 92 is a density not based on bedrooms, and then we're also relying on the approved site review in some instance to get to where we are. What's-- and while we've mentioned 107 bedrooms, it isn't locked in. And so I guess the proposal would be that this would need to be a separate condition couldn't live in the site review because it's a separate, already been approved contingent on the zone change. It would have to be a new condition of approval in the zone change in order to follow that path, so.
Commissioner Randall?
I'll explain myself on that.[899.31][899.31](Laughter). My thinking on that is, since we are-- since we had that discussion about density and bedroom count and the-- at least in my opinion, importance of bedroom count, I thought it would be good to delineate that in the final order, just so that it was clear how we got there and why we got there.
Commissioner Belcher.
I support your idea. I'm just wondering if staff, is there any problem in including that as a condition?
It's not typical in the-- but it's-- so it would live in the zone change and would be-- yeah, would need to be enforced then through building permit at the time of-- when a building came in, there would-- in the zone change, there would be limited to 107 bedrooms, and any building from here on out under that zone would need to be limited to 107 bedrooms, irregardless of what they tried to do under site review.
But that zone, as you call it, is only applied to one plot, right?
Correct, just under this zone.
So from a legal perspective, the-- anytime you apply a condition, there's a couple of things that need to be true. One is that you need to identify, and we should probably go into the order and be real clear about which criterion requires the condition, so which criterion would not be met but for the condition. And there are some where you already talk about bedrooms, and so those would be the obvious ones, but I think we want to add a little text in there, and we would need to do that today, so-- and we could. The other thing is that the condition that you impose has to be clear and objective so that when the time comes to determine compliance with it, it's very clear. And we struggled somewhat with what a bedroom is, so if there's support for this, I took a minute and crafted a condition that I think would work best, that it pulls in the existing definition of bedroom that's been used for parking in the university area and for other purposes in the JWN.
Commissioner Duncan?
Is it the same between the two areas?
The same definition, yes.
Okay.
I'm in general support of it because we really talk about-- we're really talking about bedrooms up there and the concern about the number of bedrooms. And again, without looking at new plans and everything else, I think it was-- you could go to as high as whatever the number is, 200 bedrooms or something like that, which would be of real concern. I think the limitations on bedrooms really assist here, and I did some rough math, and it's-- I think if I'm not mistaken, it's about 1.7 bedrooms per unit under the current plan, and even under R3, the R3 density that could be achieved, it's 2.8, so you-- I mean, the numbers are still, in my mind, within reason from the density standpoint, but I think it's important that we look at that and truly from-- I don't think I'm stretching outside, but that's sort of the way the market looks at it, is the number of bedrooms in these areas, and I think it's real important. We talk about parking by bedrooms and everything else, so it just seems it's, in my mind, it's just a level of consistency. Commissioner Randall?
Well, and I think too, you know, Emily, you were mentioning that we've had problems or that defining bedrooms in the past. We've also had problems defining dwelling unit in the past too, because there's, you know, as we mentioned, there's always a loophole that you can find, and, you know, so you get dwelling unit and you get five-bedroom dwelling units and meet the density, but then the bedroom count goes up. And so I guess my thought here is it just helps kind of ratchet that to where we're at the site review approval that we were looking at and not allowing anything, you know, beyond that.
I guess I'd like to add my support for that idea. I've had some concern about the R492 airing too high on the density scale for where we are and the character of this area, so I would support some additional assurance that we protect that high-end-- protect from that high-end density.
It appears there's two criteria that there's a lot of talk about density, which it could reflect to, and one would be under Policy A13 of the Metro Plan, and the other would be under the refinement plan text diagram that talks about buffer zone. I don't have any thoughts on any other areas that may--
So you'd be modifying the decision made by the hearings official, and so you need to-- we need a finding that the hearings official erred by not imposing a limitation on the number of bedrooms. So we need some text to go on. I'm looking, I'm scanning and not finding actually the reference to bedrooms. Is it--
Top of page nine, I think, would be one place that we can insert a condition and some language around the basis for it.
Okay.
Joe? Sorry.
Yeah, Emily, if it helps, you know, was the error on the hearings official's part was in not making that further analysis of the impact of density, and I think the whole review is predicated on that, what was it, the September 11th--
Mm-hmm.
--letter from--
Commissioner Taylor.
Kristen Taylor. And that whole argument is predicated on 107 bedrooms. And so if you can make that tie there, that might be the nexus--
Okay, so how about-- is there support for this? I mean, should we-- okay. Page 10 of the draft final order, because that lead-in is already there, the first full paragraph as described above, obviously, that final sentence on the third line of that paragraph, "with the modified findings above regarding this issue and the following The Planning Commission denies the applicant's first assignment of error, subassignment 1C, and change that to a colon. And while long-winded--
That's part of the order.[1355.21][1355.21](Laughter).
No, unless you want it to be. We haven't had a chance to talk about this, we just kind of got in light of the issues. So this, do you want me to read it now, or shall we just-- you want to make it, I guess you could go with the so moved. "The condition that I would suggest would say the maximum number of bedrooms on the site shall be limited to 107," is that what you-- "based on the definition of bedroom that is included in Eugene Code 9.0550 at the time of this order and attached as Exhibit A. Approval through the city's process for zone change will be required to lift or modify this cap on the number of bedrooms." And for purposes of discussion, that final sentence is there, and in working with TRIP cap conditions, which are also extremely hard to track, it's come to light that there could be a change for some reason in the future where the cap may no longer be appropriate, and it needs to be clear how you would modify the condition. We don't have a zone change modification process. So that what I've prepared here is that the individual property owner would have to seek a zone change to get that 107-bedroom limitation moved. That could be something else, but I'm not quite sure what, so.
Commissioner Duncan?
So does that then, in reality, change the zone from R4SR92 to something more explanatory?
No, I mean, your slash 92 is an actual overlay zone, and this isn't, this is--
Simply a condition of approval. I think it would carry with the property as part of the notice of zone change approval. And I think she's right that to change that maximum, the only mechanism that would make sense would be a zone change. In other words, we don't have a code process like we do for site review to make a change, to modify it.
But you said, you made that-- your comments sounded like there might be some other way to change this. I think what, if I'm not speaking, I guess I'm speaking somewhat for the Planning Commission, I think, is we kind of want to make sure if we're going to do this that we lock this down?
Well, I would think that this method is the most stringent or most locked down in terms of process. Now, with TPR and the TRIP cap, we've actually created a mechanism through a condition to require a type 2 process, but it looks at the TPR criteria. I don't, I mean, I think theory, we could try to create some form of a type 2 process, but I'm not clear what the criteria would be, other than to go back to the basis that you'd be making the condition on in the first instance, which is--
Okay. I'm okay with that. I just, the way you sort of talked about it, I want to make sure there wasn't some other avenue, somebody could sort of sneak through another loophole somewhere. I mean, I understand our code has many of those, but I'd like to be as secure as possible on this.
So they would be then, they would be limited by the 92 units per acre and 107 bedrooms by the-- because of the overlay, and a site review could be modified then, but it would have to be under 92 units per acre or 92 or less and 107 bedrooms or less?
Yeah. Commissioner Randall?
Well, and I didn't intend on muddying the waters at the 11th hour, but I think it's an important thing for us to consider, and just looking at A13, just as additional, I guess, background on, you know, why I think this makes sense, is A13 says that we should look at effectively designed infill and redevelopment. And I think, for me, the 107-bedroom count limit helps with that because, you know, we've got the density, but we've also got the bedroom count, and that just helps make sure that that project or that zone, whatever goes on that property, is an effectively designed infill and redevelopment.
Commissioner Belcher?
First of all, we've talked in the past about there being a flag in the county records that would record this to the property records so that it wouldn't be missed, would that happen here as well?
Again, the notice of zone change approval, we would add the condition, the language of the condition to that notice that's recorded, should carry with the property.
Okay. Well, given that, and given that where we're headed is where the applicant has requested us to go, I think we're doing the right thing. I can support this.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we add the text that Emily read earlier.
Second. Second, my order. Any other discussion around this? Ready for a vote? Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Is that motion just adding the text, or was that--
They did both. They added a motion to add the text to the draft and then made a motion to adopt the draft with all the changes that you laid out.
No, we don't think so. I think we should get it separate out.
No, yeah, we're not to adopting the draft quite yet, I don't think.
Just add your text.
Add your text.
Oh.
I don't know, we needed a motion for that, but--
Yeah.
But you asked. We always do what you say, mostly.
So with that, I think Commissioner Jones, you had some additional--
Yeah, I threw some, a lot of mud in the water there last night, and I apologize for my late adding to the flurry there, but it was when I could get to it. And, you know, I spent some time working my way through each step of this, trying to figure out where I had difficulty, and actually, one of the areas I had difficulty in was the compromise, which I felt was unbalanced between R3, R4 in this case, and I feel like I'm going to say that this bedroom limit addresses that concern. The other one that I had is on page seven, second to the last paragraph, last sentence ending, and this is more editing, I guess, where the sentences will result in an increase in residential density. I guess I-- I feel that's definitely a true statement, but I'm wondering if it's-- I'm feeling the need to offer that perhaps it should say more than that, that we're-- feeling the need to offer that perhaps it should say more than that, that we're changing the character, at least in this local area, from single-family to multifamily. So I just point that out. That's a concern that I have. And I'll go ahead and list the other one out and we can figure out if there's anything that the group can agree on. The other one is, this, I'm going to say this in general. It has to do with how the term high density and the definition of medium and high density has changed over time and how that has created an additional challenge for our consideration here, both in terms of the challenges from the neighborhood and how the West University Refinement Plan was developed and how it's being interpreted today as well as the Metro Plan. And I know this is really pretty inarticulate, but I'm struggling with the fact that density has not always been density, has not always been density, yet when you read this document, you don't, you don't pick that up anywhere. Or at least I don't recall picking it up anywhere. Commissioner Randall, please.
I'll respond to that. And I had mentioned this, I think, in my email that I sent out too, that if I'm looking at it right, this site is in the West University Refinement Plan under 10 Hilliard to Patterson area. And it says that it's currently zoned R3 and is developed with mostly single-family dwellings and apartment buildings. And it further goes on to say that the area is residential in character and should remain so. And that I don't necessarily read that to mean that it should stay single-family in character, but residential in character. And the apartments are residential. And the next sentence then goes on to say, which I think also furthers my interpretation of that, that no new clinics will be allowed in this area. And so for me, the way I was reading that is that it made me think that the intent was to only allow residential development, but not necessarily single-family residential. And that that becomes that buffer from the winter to the campus high density. And so that was, that was kind of my, my reading of that, so.
Okay. Commissioner Belcher.
And I had the same perception. I think, better or worse, there's very little single-family residential in this neighborhood. So trying to perverse something that isn't there doesn't make sense to me.
I guess I'll sustain on your guys, on your observations.
Yeah, it's, I know we're ratcheting this down tighter and tighter and I'm a little bit cautious of going with conditions and even the 92 maximum overlay. I mean, in a zoning, I think we'll probably, I guess it's not the first time it's been done, but this whole cap idea, even with transportation and with, now with density. We talked about it one time about having just a general discussion at the Planning Commission about the use of caps and kind of the pros and cons, and maybe we ought to do that at some time in the future. This is a tangled web. We're trying to meet city objectives of increasing the density and at the same time preserving neighborhood character. And given the code that the hearings official had to work with, I think other than the one area that he didn't go quite as deep as perhaps he should have in A-13, I think it meets the standards. So I'll be inclined to vote in favor of our findings in our decision here.
Maybe just a comment on your question about the last sentence of that paragraph on page seven where it says it will result in increased residential density. I somewhat questioned that conclusion in that, if we go back to the bedroom count, the bedroom density could be matched or met under R3. So I have just, when I read that and brought forth when I read Jeff's email, that I really questioned that. I don't think it really does increase density.
Unit, unit density.
Unit density, but not bedroom. And I think that's the quandary that we've been in, where we keep talking back and forth. And we know that what, and we've talked about it in many areas, like you have just kind of referred to, that our code tends to lag current beliefs and current conditions and so on and so forth. I mean, everybody that I know talks bedrooms up around campus all the time, not units. I don't, nobody talks units. So it sort of shows that our code just doesn't keep up with sort of what changes out there. And so that was kind of, I guess, a comment along with what you had is, you know, under R3, you could, the number I think they said was 109 or 112 or some other number could be achieved on that.
113.
So anyways, kind of my comment on that.
It sounds like I'm not going to get any nibbles on the, on the change in definition that's occurred over time, perhaps. So I wanted to bring it before the group and hear what you all had to say. So if there's nothing on that one, we'll go on from there. Commissioner Liddick.
Yeah, I move that we adopt the draft final order findings and conclusions of the Eugene Planning Commission for OBO Enterprises Z10-9 as modified.
Second. Commissioner Belcher, seconds. Additional discussion around this? Or are we there? I guess I'll offer that I'm enough there to support this. I still have some reservations about it. And I think part, my biggest, my biggest concern is pretty much what you just said, Commissioner Duncan, about how codes and language tend to lag behind what the public is perceiving and where the community is perceiving that it's going or already gone. So that's, that's my, my difficulty in this with all of the work that's been done within Vision Eugene that's not yet showing here. So I would also support it. Ready to vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Carries? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Envision Eugene Industrial Lands.
Jason, how do you keep track of all this stuff?
I don't. So we have Lisa Ford.
She does it all in this little tiny thing.
That's right.
Need anything?
You can hand that.
Well, you do an impressive job. Heather's two on this one.
I was here late. I suffer the cost.
We'll cover for you. We'll get something.
Okay, thanks.
We can all get up and take our plates in and dilly-dally around for a minute or two.
Cover my ear, boy.
Yeah, it was really good.
Probably are taking a two-minute break.
It's good. You can wait for the projector anyway.
So glad you got the memo.
It's just, it seems to happen.
This planning commission meeting brought to you by the Johnny Cash.
I had my black pants. I almost wore the black pants and the black shirt. The one time I didn't have that, everybody made like Johnny Cash.
I have the gray suit jacket, but I don't have a sweater.
I would assume not. We just left you.
I was just reminding you, we are still like rolling live.
Is the projector okay?
I turned it on. I think I'm.
Are all the black shirts going to come off and flaps going to be on?
I hope not.
Yeah.
I wore a modified flap, Andy.
We were just saying that this, this meeting brought to you by the Johnny Cash Club.
I think I switched the source. I do have a black shirt. I mean.
Heather's in black today, too.
You know, if you guys, along with the planning commission notice, would tell us what the appropriate attire is for the day, we could all dress accordingly.
I'm trying to add that to the.
Mm-hmm. They do it at the duck games now. Wear black, wear green, wear yellow.
Can you get a minute? I can't find the computer.
Think we're here?
Need your pream?
Thank you.
Yes.
We're just waiting for the computer to find the PowerPoint.
Waiting on electrons, all right. Is this a new one or something?
Uh-uh.
Since they're now slower than they were before. I may have been wrong.
Yes.
How about those ducks?
About those ducks?
Coach encounters.
What about them?
I hadn't watched that in a long time, so I haven't seen it in decades.
Well, we're having some technical difficulties, but I think Jason's going to try just winging it without the visual aids. And if it comes back on, then we'll have that as well.
Okay, great.
Is it plugged in?
We'll just sit here and look at it.
I don't say that because they're going to attack you and try to figure out our printer. Wait with it forever. Anyway, check if it was plugged in. It wasn't.
All right, well, good morning, commissioners. Here for an update, to give you an update on industrial lands, staff analysis as well as ongoing community input regarding this topic. The last time that we were here was July 25th. And so a lot of input, we received a lot of input and we've also done our own, some of our own analysis since then. So we want to bring you up to speed on the things that have been done in the interim regarding that. Essentially, the, the goal here is to frame what is partly a technical discussion, but also partly a policy discussion as well, about what our needs may be for industrial lands over the next 20 years. As you may recall, from the ECLAP process, we have a surplus of industrial lands primarily in our smaller size industrial lands. However, we are deficient in industrial lands larger than 50 acres. And so the real question is, how do our economic objectives for the future mesh with our potential need for larger industrial sites? So that's kind of the crux around which this presentation, this information will be based. As you recall, back in March, City Council said to go ahead and start analyzing areas outside the urban growth boundary for potential expansion for industrial lands. They at that time, and we have noted since then, that this need for industrial lands is primarily, sorry, it looks like we're up and going here. I'm just going to find out how to advance. There we go. But that these lands outside the UGB are just one component of our economic opportunities pillar. So when council said, go ahead and look outside the UGB for these lands, it wasn't an acknowledgement this was the only strategy to job growth in the future. It's just one component. There have been two separate economic development groups, one that met earlier this year and then kind of reconstituted group here in the fall that have met. And so we're going to update you on some of the information coming out of those groups. And as I mentioned, your last update was in July. Wow, this is touchy. New technology.
I speed read.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, our current inventory of lands, we do have many sites, less than 20 acres inside of our urban growth boundary, that are vacant industrial lands, actually more than we are projecting to need over the next 20 years. We do have some sites of 20 to 50 acres, which I'll review. And we don't have any sites that are larger than 50 acres, and I'll put an asterisk on that, no usable sites larger than 50. I'll talk about the couple that we do have. During the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment Process, our projections for needs for industrial lands were based on a future that would likely be much the same as the past in terms of our need for larger lots, as well as the employment growth we would expect. Kind of in conjunction with this, the state jobs growth forecast remains rather modest right now. We are expecting a new job forecast from the state here in the next couple of months. Their last forecast two years ago was kind of a, I won't say the depth of the recession because who knows where we're heading, but it was at a low point. And so the forecast for jobs was relatively modest. And so it's anticipated that now we're a little, perhaps a little farther removed from the bottom regarding the recession and unemployment, that we may see a slightly higher employment growth rate coming out here in the next couple of months for Lane County. What's important though is really the last bullet, which is during the ECLAP process, what we said was this was, would be our industrial land need based on where we've been and kind of the state forecast for Lane County and Eugene. Since then, the joint elected officials have adopted the Regional Prosperity Plan, which talks specifically about job growth in the area that may be beyond what the state is currently forecasting for. So we'll talk a bit about that. Wow.
New batteries.
So I talked a bit about our community involvement. It really started with the Community Resource Group last year. And the results of that were, or those discussions were at kind of a higher policy level. They helped form the pillar strategy on employment growth. And then the Economic Development Subcommittee that spun off of that really dug into the details. They reviewed our current inventory of sites, they looked at all of our vacant industrial sites larger than five acres. They actually looked at all of our developed industrial sites larger than five acres as well, looking for those opportunities to redevelop or perhaps if there was unused space. So a really detailed look at our inventory. They also developed a portfolio of sites, which I'll talk about here in a bit, that they felt were one idea of what we, sites we might need over the next 20 years. They spent a lot of time talking about site suitability, how we should think about the sites that we have, where should they be located geographically, what kinds of transportation access, what should the adjacent uses be, what kind of utilities might they need. So they spent time on that. Since that time, as this economic development group, as I mentioned, kind of reconvened here in the last few months, there was a lot of discussion about the food industry. There has been kind of the recognition that we do have kind of an organic and natural foods cluster going here in Eugene and other food clusters as well. And there's been a lot of work by our community development staff on a food industry. So incorporating that, even though it wasn't specifically mentioned in the JEO plan. So a quick reminder of our economic prosperity pillar there are, and really this is for context as to how it relates to large lot industrial need. One of the components we're not going to talk about today, but meeting all of our commercial land need inside the UGB. Another strategy coming out of the CRG was to implement the Joint Elected Officials Regional Prosperity Plan, which has its own set of other strategies and tactics like job training and spinning off clusters related to innovation and research from the university and many, many other things. Another strategy is to consolidate and redevelop our vacant and developed industrial sites. So not just focusing on new sites, but what can we do to make our existing sites more viable? We do have sites that have been difficult to develop, so what can we do? Supporting sites that remain outside the UGB, primarily this refers to the Goshen area. Its distance from the UGB makes it difficult to presume bringing it into Eugene. However, we want to continue to support Lane County's efforts in the Goshen area, and they do have active efforts right now. Determining an appropriate portfolio of sites was another strategy. That was some work that Economic Development subgroup did. And then the last strategy, which is really the focus for this presentation, is the recommendation to expand the UGB by 400 to 500 acres for industrial. And again, that's largely for large sites. So looking briefly at the JEO plan, it set a goal of 20,000 jobs in the next 20 years for the region. And the thinking on this is that it is a shift in policy, a shift in strategy, a real effort to try to raise wages and lower unemployment. Our wages are significantly lower than the state. Our wages are significantly lower than the state, and our state wages are lower than the nation, and so we're really lagging behind here in Lane County and in Eugene. Also have high unemployment issues as well. So, it was really to not think about our job growth as being the same as in the past, but potentially different than what it's been in the past. And that would be beyond what the state is forecasting, so the state is doing what they can to forecast job growth in the area, but if we are to shift our policies or to strategize differently than in the past, those jobs may likely be above and beyond what the state is forecasting. So there are several strategies embodied in that plan, one of which is targeted industries, and we'll talk a bit more about that. For reference, those 20,000 jobs mentioned in the plan for the next 10 years, we are forecasting, based on the state employment growth forecast, about 37,000 new jobs in Eugene in the next 20 years. So it gives you a sense for the, where that 20,000 sits. So these targeted industries mentioned in the plan include clean technology and renewable energy, you can think of solar manufacturing there, health and wellness industries, we have growing clusters in that area, as well as biomedical, which is related, advanced manufacturing, and software. These industries match those for which we seem to have some good locational factors for where we might plan to see growth in those sectors. There's something that's average or above average about this area that we could look to these companies wanting to locate here in the future.
What's advanced manufacturing?
Advanced manufacturing, and this is where I wish we had Mike Sullivan from the Development Department here. It's simply kind of the, I'm not gonna find the right words, but kind of the added value manufacturing, not necessarily primary manufacturing, but real innovative or technology-rich kinds of manufacturing. Solar manufacturing can sometimes be considered in that category, other kinds of high-tech can also be in that category as well. I may have, I'll check when I'm through if I've got some examples to better paint that picture. So one industry not mentioned in the JEO plan was food, and there's been additional discussion on that recently. Again, our Community Development Department is, or Division is, spending a lot more time on food right now. There's a lot of discussion about it in the community, there've been articles recently in the paper referencing our food industry here in town, and that we might have something special going on here. So, this cluster may involve the need for production facilities, processing facilities, or potentially distribution. And so you can think about, if that food industry got bigger, it may start driving some need. It may also implicate, or want us to think about how we use our land outside of our current UGB. So as I mentioned, the Economic Development Group subgroup that was meeting worked on a portfolio of sites. I think it's important at this point to mention that that group did not reach consensus on all of their work, but I think one of their, a couple pieces of their really important work were this portfolio of potential sites for the next 20 years, as well as the site suitability discussions, were both things that much of the group were in agreement on. And so, their work highlighted the need over the next 20 years for five sites in each of these two categories. And so, then the exercise was to see, how does our current portfolio of sites fill this out? And so you can see that we have, four of those five sites already vacant and available inside the urban growth boundary. We also have two more, I too, those are medium, I'm sorry, light to medium industrial sites. So you can see that we have a fairly good supply of sites in 20 to 50 acre range. What we don't have are any sites of larger than 50 acres. Now, we do have a couple of sites, one is the Metropolitan Wastewater Site, the Poplar Farm out in northwest Eugene. The Economic Development Group did not feel that that posed, that that was a viable site in the future, given the uses that are happening there right now, and there are extensive wetland issues on that site. The other site, it's worth noting, worth noting, is that we do have a 56 acre site off of Enid Road, however, the group did not feel, given the constraints on that site, primarily that there are wetlands, that doesn't really function as a 50 acre site. So, while there are a couple sites out there, we don't really have a usable site larger than 50 acres. Yeah?
So does the Heineck Site count as a larger than 50 acre site?
As, it counts as a larger than, as a developed site larger than 50 acres, this is referring to vacant sites.
Okay.
So where are those six sites between 20 and 50 acres? Here's just a quick snapshot of where these are. There's one out on Chad Drive, which is on the right-hand side of the map there, one to the west of Green Hill at the bottom left, and then a cluster up there in northwest Eugene. So this is where our vacant sites of 20 to 50 acre size class are right now in the city. And so, and if you wanna, if you think about this, one of the approaches to developing an acreage need number is to think about if we were to supply five acres, five sites of more than 50 acres, and if one of those would be 100 acres in size, or the possibility of creating a 100 acre site. This is where we get to the four to 500 acre recommendation. And again, that was not a recommendation coming out of the Economic Development Subgroup, that group actually produced a couple reports, separate reports, they didn't reach consensus, and staff took that work forward and developed this recommendation. So.
What did that chart represent? Those are sites, those are areas of how big?
20 to 50.
20 to 50, okay. Could two, six, and four be consolidated to be 100?
Potentially, there are some, you can kind of see a tiny white line that goes between four and six and two, there's a waterway there. And there are, I think there's another waterway on site four. So there are some possibilities, and Economic Development Group did talk about that. And one of the strategies that is in the current proposal is to think about an industrial land trust, or, you know, having the city be more actively involved in developing sites. And one of those functions might be to help consolidate sites in some way, so potentially that could be a bigger site.
Just the way that waterway is configured with those right angles, is that like a human-made ditch?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Actually, if I'm not mistaken, it was a natural one that was recreated as farm, you know, to drain farmlands. And so, it sure follows.
The property lines.
Property lines, section lines, things like that.
Yeah, okay.
At one point, it was a natural waterway, yes.
Yeah, but not in that configuration.
Correct. So, when we look at expansion area, what's important to note is that, similar to residential, if we needed just one acre of industrial land, we would need to analyze all of our potential expansion areas. So, that is some of the work that staff's been doing, we're gonna update you on our mapping, what we found, and also update you on the property owner contacts that we've made in these potential expansion areas. So you may recall this map, I won't go into this in great detail, but essentially it highlighted four areas that were viable for potential expansion for industrial. The Clear Lake area out in northwest Eugene, the Coburg Game Farm Road there in northeast Eugene, the Russell Creek Basin in southeast Eugene, which is where LCC is, and then the Goshen Site. I talked a bit earlier about the Goshen Site, essentially, as discussions have evolved, and now that Lane County is taking an active role, they're actually contacting property owners, they're doing their own work around helping to develop that site. It has become less of a priority for Eugene in terms of bringing into the UGB, however, it is still our strategy to support the county's efforts, because everyone agrees that those Goshen Sites would potentially be great sites, given their transportation access. So with the three remaining sites, we'll walk through these really quickly here, or not so quickly, actually. The first site here is the Russell Creek Basin, you can see LCC there, kind of in the center. In looking at this site, the area in red is about 550 acres, the initial study area. We ended up, for various reasons, only sending letters to two property owners here, primarily because the area across the north there, very small parcels, site assembly issue there. You also start getting into some slopes there on the north part of the site, or north part of that area. Obviously, LCC has a big acreage there, and we wouldn't anticipate that for industrial. On the southeast side there, that large parcel is Oak Hill School. And then, to the west of LCC, those sites have some slope issues. So, really the only two sites that we felt might be viable to try to gauge property owner and property owner interest are those two sites with the stars there. One property owner owns those two pieces with the yellow star there at the east side, right by the I-5 interchange. It's about 20 acres, and they were interested in potential industrial uses. And then the other site we've not heard from with the blue star, although that site has pretty extensive wetlands on it, and may not be, although it is about 50 acres, it's got some significant issues potentially for an industrial use, given that. So, we're continuing to keep this area kind of in the mix, given where it's located, and it is further away from the UGB than the other two sites, so it's not directly proximate, but depending on what happens with the rest of the study, this area could still have some viability. So, it remains on the table, but you can see there aren't a lot of sites here that would be suitable. So the next area that we're gonna talk about is the, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure which it is. It's the Clear Lake Site, so that's the one there on the northwest side of town. So this area initially started out as about an 850 acre study area. There are about 20 owners, property owners in the area that received letters representing about 640 of those acres. We've heard back from 14 of those, and those 14 represent 522 acres. There are three publicly owned pieces here, one by ODOT, one by BPA, and then one by the small power company, which I can't remember the name of right now. Yes, Blatchley Lane. And then there are three property owners we have not heard from, three in blue are the three that we have not heard back from. We are continuing to try to contact those individuals. Essentially, when we contact property owners, we're asking them if they have any questions, we're informing them that the area is under review, and also trying to gauge their level of interest. And so all of these landowners with the stars have indicated an interest in being brought into the UGB for industrial use.
If I'm not mistaken, the land that the city owns for Candle, I'm sorry, Golden Gardens Park is just right below that, plus Bethel. One of these pieces on the bottom corner is the piece that Bethel owns that we're talking about bringing in for additional public land.
I've got a map here a little further on that shows those two in context with that. So a fair bit of support in this area for, at least from the property owner standpoint. So, what we did when we started determining that this area had, you know, a lot of large sites, for example, those, I don't have a pointer here, but those sites, kind of the square sites, there are 40 acres, they're, so that gives you a sense of the size. Yes, thank you Carolyn, those are 40 acre sites. When we started looking at this area more closely, we were concerned about the wetland issues out here, and I think we've talked about this before. What, so the areas in green here are potential wetlands, it's based on only looking at aerial photos, soils maps, it's not on the ground inventory. Since we have shown this map to you last, we've done some additional work trying to get out on the ground and also talk to property owners about any work they've done regarding wetlands. And so the site at the very top there, it's about an 85 acre site between the airport and Highway 99. About 15 years ago, that property owner had a wetland study done, and that study was verified and approved by the Department of State Lands, and what they found were only about four acres of jurisdictional wetlands on that property. So, this map showed a potential for about 40 acres. In reality, there are only about four there. So this and some other work leads us to believe that while there are wetlands out there, they likely aren't as extensive as what's shown here, which was kind of the goal. This was an attempt to cast a pretty broad net around wetlands, not to really nail it down, to show the greatest extent. So, we feel that there are likely fewer wetlands than what are shown here.
Was this taken from NWI maps, or soils maps, or what's the source for this general?
This, these, this actual line came from a wetland consultant that did this work based on soils mapping and aerial photos. And, you know, looking at aerial photos historically and from different times of year, so it is, it is more than the NWI inventory. So, just wanted to give you kind of a quick tour of what this area looks like. So you can see, there'll be a little icon on the map there showing the direction of the view, so this is looking across these properties, and then you can see the industrial land in the back that's already developed, that is currently inside the UGB. Similar types of lands, all of them being farmed right now, fairly low, low-level farming that's not returning a whole lot for these property owners, most of them say they're about covering their taxes with what they're producing right now. And then looking at this site back, kind of towards the UGB. And then here are the two sites up by the airport, looking kind of southeast across this site towards Highway 99, and then looking from 99 back towards the airport. It's basically just a plowed field in the foreground there.
So, the soil classes are fairly low, I assume, so it could be.
Yeah, I've got another map that's gonna show the soils a little better, we'll talk about that.
And you'll probably talk about the airport constraints as well as we go along.
Yes, yes. So that kind of concludes the look at Clear Lake, at least for now, we'll come back to that. The last area that we were looking at was the Coburg Game Farm Road area there on the northeast side of town. This area bounded in red there is about 350 acres. There are, you can see the soils here, the light green is Class II soil, which is kind of the second best agricultural soil, the dark green is, which I know is hard to see, is Class I. If you look at the far southeast part of the area bounded in red, you can see some of the dark green there. So primarily Class II with some Class I, both considered productive agricultural soils. This area is entirely within the 100-year floodplain. Again, that's not a prohibition on development, but it's something that some industries prefer to not be located in areas that are in the 100-year floodplain. We sent letters to five property owners who actually own multiple properties totaling close to 200 acres. We've heard from three of those owners, the stars there, the yellow stars are the owners that we have heard from, and two that have not responded. At this point, given the proximity to residential here, which you can see there along Game Farm Road, we have residential on the other side of the road, given the proximity to residential, the 100-year floodplain issues, and also a pretty significant but kind of unknown issue about the transportation infrastructure needed at that I-5 Gateway Interchange. We don't know if there were additional industrial uses here, it could really tax that interchange, tax may not be the right word, it could really make that interchange difficult, and significant upgrades might be needed. So, given those factors, this site is a little lower down in what we're thinking about for our priority on these sites, however, it remains kind of in the mix, because there are a couple sites that might be viable here. And so, just kind of looking at this area, this is from Game Farm Road, looking back towards I-5. Again, looks a lot like the Clear Lake Sites, you know, just fairly low-intensity agricultural use. So this is the last map I have, and this is returning back to the Clear Lake area here, which at this point, I think, at least based on our analysis, has kind of the most viability for large lot industrial use. There's a little more context here, you can see in red is our current urban growth boundary, in yellow, or kind of orange, are the sites that were under review. You can see there the Bethel School Site and the Golden Gardens Park Site there at the south part. Both of those are proposed for inclusion in the UGB currently. The Bethel has, Bethel School District has identified the need for that site for their future expansion, and Golden Gardens bringing that into the UGB allows the city to develop that park per our current plans. And then the blue kind of wiggly line that you can see running through that is the airport noise contour. And the relevance for that is really that there's a strong discouragement at having residential uses within that contour. And so where that line is there, anywhere west of that going towards the airport, is where they discourage residential use. So, a part of the thinking was that industrial uses may be suitable uses in those areas, since they can't be used for industrial, or perhaps shouldn't be used for industrial. The early discussion of the Economic Development Group meetings focused on a couple of these sites, the two at the north there, between the airport or between Green Hill Road and Highway 99, those two sites totaled to about 150 acres. And those sites were ones that the group was in fairly strong agreement made sense to bring into the UGB. You can see that they have Class II soils, but not as much. The other areas to the south there have a mix of Class II and Class I, so various constraints out there, but there was, people felt pretty good about those two sites there up near the airport, and they are kind of, kind of wedged between Highway 99 and the airport and other industrial uses. In general, when we think about these sites for suitability for different industries, what's notable is that the site sizes are relatively large, typically more than 40 acres. They're all contiguous to each other, so they could potentially be assembled into larger sites. larger sites. They are adjacent to industrial uses, and typically no other uses except industrial. They have good road access as well as good airport access as well, and they are close to rail access also. Yep.
Parallel to the runway east of it is that double line, looks like a road. That's not a road, is it?
Yes, it is. The coverage may not be completely right there on where it is, but it is a road. It's a little further east than that, I think. It's not right where that black line shows. I think it's green, I want to say Green Hill. It runs right along those two properties there. You can drive kind of right next to them. That's actually where the photos came from, were from that road. It's just outside the airport boundary.
Is it the remainder of what was?
No, it's actually the redo of Green Hill.
Yeah, when they rerouted it, that's kind of where it ended up.
It used to run along the, yeah, west.
So, that kind of concludes our look through those sites, as well as the information that we have today. As we talked about, the Clear Lake area kind of rises to the top. These sites are suitable for the industries that we are targeting. There's a significant amount of property owner interest out there, so we're not, we don't have a concern about property owners that aren't interested. We do have a City Council work session on industrial lands coming up next week, so any feedback or comments or thoughts you want to share, we can take along to City Council next week. And we do have an open house dealing with industrial lands, as well as, I think, with commercial lands coming up on December 6th. So, still a lot happening regarding industrial lands, but we would love to get kind of your feedback on the amount and kind of the general locations.
So, I have a Wikipedia definition of advanced manufacturing. It says, "One of the most widely-used definitions of advanced manufacturing involves the use of technology to improve products and/or processes with the relevant technology being described as advanced, innovative, or cutting-edge."
Oh, thank you.
Does that help?
Not a bit.
Depends on your opinion of cutting edge, I guess.
For example, one organization defines advanced manufacturing as industries that increasingly integrate new innovative technologies of both products and processes. I know, it's very vague.
Any examples?
Um, let's see. No. "Advanced manufacturing centers upon improving the performance of U.S. industry through innovative application of technologies, processes, and methods to product design and production."
That would, as applied, that would apply to all manufacturing.
Yeah, and then it says here, another one, "A concise definition of advanced manufacturing offered by some is manufacturing that entails rapid transfer of science and technology into manufacturing products and processes."
But what you didn't say is, the article starts with, "There is no one comprehensive, widely-accepted definition of advanced manufacturing."
Well, that's, I didn't see that, but yes.
The phrase is used by many organizations in different, somewhat conflicting ways. However, there are strong trends in how the phrase is used.
Sounds like most our definitions.
It's a moving target.
Yeah.
Our use of the term comes from the Joint Elected Officials Plan, who use that term, "advanced manufacturing," and in parentheses, they say "technologically-rich innovative manufacturing," so.
Commissioner Belcher.
First of all, thank you for pointing out that this is just one component of the pillar, but it begs the question for me, and that is what work is done on consolidation of lands within the UGB and the idea of brownfields, despite how difficult they may be. And is that, does that be looked at as well, or has that just been a set aside, and all the effort has been going towards looking at lands outside?
It's being looked at, although it is considered an implementation strategy to try to work on the land trust idea. I know that we have secured a grant or are very close to securing a grant for a brownfield study to start assessing where our brownfields are. The money would not be for mitigation of those brownfields, but identifying them is kind of the first step. So, we are trying to secure some funding to do that, to move that forward. One of the, when the Economic Development subgroup met, part of the discussion there, actually a good chunk of it, was trying to figure out how much redevelopment of sites or consolidation or brownfield remediation might have an impact over the next 20 years. And there were pretty varying opinions on that could have a very quick impact versus it might take a very long time to have an impact. So, there are some sites out there, however, the discussion about some of the brownfield sites we do have is that they would take a fair bit of money and time to be able to remediate. I think it's an important part of our strategy, but it's been a little more on the implementation end than the current phase.
I guess my request would be that if you took that paragraph that you just gave us and inserted the presentation to council, that would be a more balanced. Thank you again.
Good, yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Duncan.
Me, oh, sorry. I think, in addition, I think it's real important, on one of the slides that you talk about where we say, "Many sites," you know, when you talk about our current inventory, you say, "many sites less than 20 acres." I mean, we did quite a bit of work in that, really kind of, kind of laying that out, and truly, there are not many sites between 5 and 20 acres. Most of the sites are very small sites, and I think that would give the council a better understanding of the characteristics of what exists. For some of what John's talking about, and part of what we looked at was where are these sites located? I think we looked at everything 3 acres and above, and there really wasn't a lot of assemblage possibilities because they were just generally contiguous in a lot of ways. I mean, there are some out there that are like that. And I think that would give council an idea, because when you say less than, you know, there's many sites less than 20, it seems to me that, well, there's got to be a lot of 12s and 15s and 18s and things. What I remember is, we only had a couple 3 that were even above 10, if I remember correctly. A second comment is, we tend to talk about, this is on your slide on page 3, where we talk about 20,000 jobs in the next 10 years. I think it's more important as a community, from an economic standpoint, that we really strive more for, you know, seek raising wages and lower unemployment. To me, that's really where we benefit our community more, is we need to get wage levels up in this community and unemployment down, and not be so cyclical, because, you know, Oregon in general, when the economy gets hit nationally, Oregon's one of those that first to go and the last to come back. And it seems to me that instead of talking always about new jobs and everything else, we need to talk about how do we get better jobs into our community? To me, that needs to be, that needs to be number one, because we can add 20,000 jobs, but if they're all paying close to minimal wage, nobody can buy a house, nobody can buy anything, we just create a bigger problem and a more affordable problem. So, I think it's real important that we talk about utilizing the capacity we have in our community, such as the University of Oregon, LCC and everything, and really leverage those in a way that we really create more. To me, that needs to be a big push of this community. And I just tend to see it sort of talked about, but not really brought up to the number-one point, that this is what we've got to do. You know, if our City Council really wants to do something, let's go get better jobs so that we don't have the affordability problem over and over and over.
Jason, you mentioned there's a grant that we're on the verge of getting to study these brownfield sites. I guess I'm a little curious about what the scope of that study is. Would that include any kind of look at what the cost of mitigation would be for sites? So, we get a feel for that, because that seems to be the big looming question.
I think it would. Part of that work would be to not only identify where there might be brownfields, but the nature of those. Because as you noted, some of them are very difficult and expensive to mitigate, and some are not. And so, I think part of that is to identify not only where they are, but how feasible it is to think about remediating those.
And then one last question for me, and that is, you mentioned that the Economic Development Subcommittee has had two incarnations, or I may be misstating. Can you give, can you give us a little refresher on what, why that, what's happened there? There was a committee, then now there's a committee, but we kind of, I'd like a little more background on that.
Sure. Initially, the first, and there's been one reincarnation of the committee in two, in two phases. So, the initial phase was coming out of the Community Resource Group in about December of last year. When that group's work was finishing up, there were several subgroups that were created. One was housing mix, one was kind of employment lands. And so, that group met multiple times throughout January and February to really hammer out a lot of the details. They looked at the sites that Commissioner Duncan mentioned, they looked at creating the portfolio of sites, the characteristics of sites that would be needed. So, they really kind of dug in and got their hands dirty. But in going through those technical questions, they managed to surface a fair number of policy questions as well. You know, how many sites do we need? You know, they duly noted that it's not necessarily a technical exercise. It has, there's some policy ramifications there on, on how we look at that. And so, when their work, I think they were striving to reach consensus around what might be an appropriate number of acres needed over the next 20 years, but they were not able to get there. And so, they, there were a couple different reports created coming out of that group that summarized their work and from different perspectives. At that point in time, we were moving forward on developing a staff recommendation. We took the work of that group and, as much as we could, tried to build that into the recommendation that was put forward. And so, that was, I want to say, late spring. And then throughout the summer, there really wasn't a lot of work necessarily done around this. As things started to heat back up again in the fall, we wanted to get that group back together again to see if they might be able to kind of reinform the discussion. And that's where a more, a few more policy questions came up, but the discussion about food and agriculture came, agriculture came up again as well.
I'll just add to that. We did add a few members to that group. There was some concern about kind of the balance of the overall group, and so, we worked with the former chairs to help select the membership of the reconstituted group, and that's kind of where we are with the membership. And we had two meetings, I believe, to date.
And they also were very interested in getting a full sense of the staff work that had been done, and how that was backing up the recommendations that were going forward. And so, they had some really good thoughts about how to lay, what they would like to see in terms of laying out all the data and all the information that's been gathered. And so, we're pulling all that together, and, you know, their input on that has been really helpful.
Commissioner Randall.
You were talking about food now being, kind of coming back up in the, in the topic of discussion, and I guess I'm wondering, as we've kind of looked at how commercial and industrial lines, as far as definitions in the code, have kind of blurred over the years, I'm wondering if a similar thing with industrial, especially related to the food industry and agricultural, might also have some overlaps? And maybe I'm back at that 50,000-foot level or something, and even maybe back to form-based codes, because I know I've been struggling with, you know, our definitions of industrial, our definitions of commercial, our definitions of agricultural, and how there seems to be a lot of change in that over the years, and even, I guess, residential, as we recently saw. And are we kind of considering, kind of back to that 50,000-foot level, changes in definitions to more relate to, you know, where we're at today on reality as far as commercial-industrial? And can we, that's, I guess, maybe first part. Second part is, with the state, are we locked into commercial, industrial, agricultural, those sorts of definitions, or can we update those?
So, we are not locked into those definitions, which is good. In general, the state just wants to make sure you're looking at employment lands, residential lands separately, whatever, however you may zone or designate those in your community. We are, one of the earliest comments as part of In Vision Eugene was to, you know, and this came up in your discussion earlier, kind of catching our code up with, and our zoning up to where the world is going. And so, creating what has been talked about as a more flexible employment zone, or just an employment zoning, as opposed to making this distinction between campus, light industrial, and commercial, there's a lot of overlap there, and we're seeing it. And I think those comments are acknowledgement of the fact that our zoning perhaps hasn't caught up with what we're seeing on the ground, or the interest that we're seeing. It's important to note that from the standpoint of food, it really, we can see it at the area you mentioned, at kind of this commercial-industrial interface, where you might be on a very small lot, producing something onsite and retailing it on the site, all the way up to large-scale food processing and manufacturing. And so, it really doesn't necessarily relate to just large-lot industrial. A lot of this food, cluster food industry can happen on much smaller acreages. And part of the discussion as well that came up in the, in the subgroup is really about, if our future is more around food, we also need to think about how the lands outside of our UGB, both here and all the way up, you know, through the mid-valley, are considered. That, more recently, that the southern Willamette Valley has been the area of discussion around food production. And so, it's not necessarily something where we say, "The few hundred acres around Eugene are going to provide, you know, all this food." It's really, you've got to think a little broader for a food shed, so to speak. And so, the food issue has multiple kind of avenues to it, and we're trying to bring all of that in and consider it all, you know, at once.
Commissioner Lettich.
I was going to go back to Rick's comment, but Jason, on the, on the food industry, and I go back to when AgriPac was here, and that was, you know, taking, harvesting agricultural crops locally and then distributing those in a broader region. Isn't the trend now looking at agricultural production for local consumption? Or is that the kind of agricultural processing we're talking about? Food processing?
It's been talking, go ahead.
Not necessarily. I mean, it certainly can be inclusive of that, but I think it's looking at more things that can be regionally distributed. I mean, things like, you know, Negasi beer, for example, which is going all up and down the West Coast right now. We have organic fruits that can be turned into different, you know, ice creams and after, things that get sent wider than Oregon, wider than local consumption. So, I think it's certainly, there's certainly some people who are talking about that, local reliance on local food production. But I think what we're talking about, and what was pointed out during our Economic Development Committee's conversations, was that, that broader food production as an industry has been omitted from the regional plan, and we should be looking at it as a strategy.
Yeah, you know, just what Franz Bakery, US Bakery did when they relocated, that's a fantastic facility. It's unfortunate that, I think we lost Grain Mill.
Grain Millers.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that they couldn't stay. I think that's a regional distributor as well. Anyway, but back to your point, you know, about higher wages rather than just jobs, I find it interesting in the Eco Northwest report on the top of page 2, that it talks about the past, or the forecasted growth is based on past trends and does not account for employment growth resulting in expansion of employment in the traded-sector industries, manufacturing. And, you know, from my observations, when the timber industry diminished, and we lost all of those manufacturing jobs, and then, you know, we thought we had a replacement, a high-tech, up-to-date replacement with Heinecks, and then that one went out of business. And then you look at the motor coaches in the area that, I don't know this, I have to think that they're fairly well-paying positions, you know, they're based on manufacturing and selling a product elsewhere. That, to me, is where the aspirational aspect that DLCD allows us to think about in terms of providing the kinds of sites for those traded-sector or manufacturing industry, higher-wage, typically type of industries, is really important to consider. And, you know, I understand the, the arguments that are made by the members of the economic team that, that didn't necessarily support expansion of the urban growth boundary for, for industry, but, but this has been a longtime debated question, and I know promoted by the Chamber of Commerce, that we simply don't have the, the larger sites even ready for somebody to come and take advantage of if they were interested. I mean, we're just at a competitive disadvantage. And I was surprised during the CRG meetings that we simply don't have the certified shovel-ready sites that other communities even have on a, on a list that you can go to a website and look at and see what you have. Eugene is off the map on that. We're not even present. And many years ago, I was on industrial committees that the state of Oregon was in that same situation, doing absolutely no promotion of industrial sites or looking at industrial sites. And I think it's come to hurt us, and we just have to realize that it's the manufacturing kinds of traded-sector industries. The ones that we have here currently in the local area need to be supported so that they can increase their employment, and we need to be on the lookout and be able to take advantage of new ones that come along, too. So, I think you're heading in the right direction with this. I do have a question. I'm not that familiar with the JEO report. What is meant by advancing the creative economy? Maybe you ought to look that up on Wikipedia. Maybe you ought to look that up on Wikipedia. The creative economy, what is that?
Um, I don't, do you?
That's an initiative.
I was just going to, mine's more of a guess, but I think it has to do with those kinds of things that come out of the Riverfront Research Park, innovative.
Okay.
But I'm really guessing. Jason, did you have anything more?
That was really kind of, that was one of the big things, was really building off of those incubators that we have, University of Oregon, research, those kinds of things.
Yeah, you know, we have a tremendous asset there with the community academics and the research that goes on. But can we point to very many examples of what's happened in the Riverfront Research Park and where those incubators have grown to a number of better-paying type of jobs? We've taken full advantage of that. You know, the industrial triangle in North Carolina does a tremendous job with that. And I know that was the effort here many years ago when the Riverfront Research, Riverfront was developed. But have there been examples that we can even point to where we've capitalized on that?
I think there's a number of companies that have come out of that that have grown, but I think there's also a number of those that have been then purchased and moved away. So, I think that that's a dynamic that's happened, and I can't think of any to cite right now, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's a sense I have too, Lisa, yeah.
Commissioner Duncan.
Let's see, a few points we came up on brownfields. One of the challenges that we saw with industrial brownfields is that they tend to cost you a lot more to fix than they do, than they're worth when they're done. But the other side of it is, are there brownfields out there that we can take and create other uses out and say, go to commercial? Because if it costs you $10 a foot to build it, but you can get $20 out of it, then it's worthwhile doing. Great example is the Home Depot up in the DOWs that took an old landfill and bought that, and everybody assumed it was never going to be redeveloped or anything. And because of the nature of that company and how you build on those, you can use pilings and stuff like that. So, there are ways to get around brownfields that makes sense if you find them in areas where you can use them for something at a higher value. One of the conversations we had, and I know that Commissioner Mills and I have had, is part of the large track concept that we talked about, that we want to maintain just large tracks of land. We all recognize that as companies come in, if they land on a large track, they create spin-off companies that may not need big. And we talked about further studies, trying to recognize that if you have big, but you land big, then there may be small needed around it, and you can't necessarily hope small goes somewhere else. So, you've got to be able to create that transition. The other one that we really kind of focused more on is, and I hear it a lot in my industry, is that we have local grown companies that have outgrown their facilities but can't find a place to go relocate, and they end up either just growing and growing, or you end up with, and there's a few companies around who end up with getting a parcel down the street, the one around the block, and they end up having to spend a lot of time on our roadways, transferring product around circles. And so, I think there needs to be a recognition, if we're going to have larger spaces, that somehow our locally grown people have some type of priority or something to be able to move into an area. They may only need 15 acres or 18 acres, or figure out a mechanism that they, if they're required to get a bigger space, say 20 acres, that maybe the city steps in with a land trust or whatever and buys the extra 10 acres they don't really need, and somehow try to be able to use that so that we really can foster a better growth within our own companies. Because everything you read, most employment truly comes from within, not from without. You just don't get big companies all the time. The other thing, I read an article, and I should try to find it for you guys if you haven't seen it. I think it came out of Harvard Research that talked about these huge industries coming in, such as the dismanufacturing industries, and I'm going to suggest that the, or the large motor coach companies and stuff, that they tend to have a lifespan of about 20 years. And then that industry sort of gets swallowed up or changes significantly, and their plants are, become obsolete. I mean, the greatest example is Sony, who ended up luckily selling to Pecel, who can use it, but ended up buying that at, you know, a whole lot less than what it cost to build it. So, I think we need to understand that a lot of industries change so much, the buildings are going to become obsolete in a much shorter period of time, and we have to be able to live with that. It was interesting, when we talked about the food industry, one of the people on our industrial group was really okay if we had a fairly large food processing facility locate on farmland, because it was food processing, if it had to be in somewhere where it had better class soils. And I think the other thing I might point out, Jason, when you talk about the Class Ones, particularly out in the Clear Lake, if I remember right, the Class One soil was a spot of only a matter of a very few acres, and Class Two was not a significant more. So, I think when you start talking about Class One soils, if you're talking about a site that's 100 acres in size, and you've got Class One soil that's a spot that takes up two acres, does that mean I want to stop development there because it's Class One soil? So, I think that kind of information helps understand when we talk about soil types, that it's not necessary that it's a large majority, that there's some of them that are small. Yeah, that's it for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, Rick said a lot of what I wanted to say about growing our local industries. I recall back in recent ancient history, when I was on the enterprise zone, that what we found was that those are the jobs that stay. And since then, I think evidence has shown that to be the case. The other thing that was interesting at that time is that the enterprise zone to grow new jobs in those industries was costing about $1,000 to $2,000 per job, whereas Heinecks and HMT and Sony were all coming in with $40,000 or more for new jobs. So, not only are they long-lived jobs, but they may be more easily developed and added as well. So, you said most of what I wanted to say, but I wanted to add that, too.
And speaking, are we trying to tie in with the state's economic gardening program that hits the state January 1 of this year, of 2012?
Gardening?
It's not being done up in Portland, but there's going to be funds available for, to come in and help companies through a state-supported marketing program, where they actually come in with a specialist, and he analyzes your company and helps you figure out how to grow your company to the next level. There's some requirements, but it's been going on in a pilot up in Portland, and as of January 1, it's going to be available to the state. You were talking about numbers, I forget the number, but I think it's the amount of money they spent there creating jobs for every $1,100 spent or something versus these national organizations, like you said, are tens of thousands per job type thing for a local economy. So, good bang for a buck.
And I guess the other thing I would add, and it's totally anecdotal, but there was also a perception that local companies grow their jobs with local people, whereas if you bring in large industries, they tend to bring people from out of town as well, which exacerbates our need for housing, et cetera, et cetera. But don't quote me on that one. That was a perception, not necessarily a reality.
Sean.
I'm wondering, we did provide some information about the different locations that we're looking at, and I'd be interested in hearing if folks had anything feedback about the fact that we are kind of looking most closely at the Clear Lake area. And we talked a little bit about the soils, but any other comments about those areas would be helpful.
Well, again, I'd like you to be looking at the sites inside first, but if you do have to go outside, from what you presented, Clear Lake seems to make the most sense to me, especially given, as I said previously, when we looked at Russell Creek for residential. Folks have tried to go there before, and it wasn't easy. So, I think that's another challenge there as well.
Commissioner Randall.
And I think the Clear Lake site, where it's already adjacent to existing industrial along Highway 99, those sorts of things, near the airport, I think it also has some distinct advantages to some of the other sites, too. So, I would agree.
Commissioner Duncan.
I would probably consider looking at all three locations, because companies tend to sometimes have different characteristic needs for siting. I certainly like Russell Creek as far as that small piece down next to LCC, which I know becomes problematic because of reaching out to it. But I've always wondered why we don't have more, lack of a better term, employment-type lands that could support LCC and all the work LCC does with all their labor training programs and everything else. It seems to me, we talk about transportation, and I know with downtown, they'll be able to do some of this, but here's LCC, and everybody that gets there has to come some way to get there, which creates a lot of travel, where if we had some kind of hub around it, even with housing, I think, that that would really support that location. I somewhat question the one up in northeast, because I think that, in my mind, would probably be better for some type of housing or, because there was a pretty good commercial development up in that corner. So, for me, I think I see housing up in there more, maybe some employment. Clear Lake certainly is about as best, I think, as we've got, even though I don't think Beltline is such a wonderful highway to have to travel to get to I-5, because until Beltline gets cured, however that occurs, it's going to have a lot of problems on it continually. But the one thing I do like about that, not only so much for the industrial, but at the location at, near the airport, and I keep pushing the idea, I don't know if it works, somebody tells me not, that it's not going to work, but it seems to me we have a massive amount of land at the airport that doesn't get used for anything, and it might be a great place to look at a mitigation bank solely to mitigate the Clear Lake area. We already have control of it, we're never going to build buildings on most of it, why not try to use it? The only thing we have to worry about is birds. You know, if we, I don't know if you can create wetlands without attracting birds, rather than attracting out there. That's why they have those dogs running around.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need birds and dogs.
A lot of dogs running that land out there, keep those birds out. But again, it just seems to me there's land that's controlled by the city. If it could work, it might be a way to help, as Randy was talking about, take care of some of the delineation mitigation problems that are going to have to occur on that land out there if we actually end up going there.
Commissioner Lydic.
Yeah, aside from the natural constraints that are associated with all three sites, I think the advantage that the airport location has, is a couple of them, whatever, to whatever benefit industries might have for air freight, certainly there's that connection. Also, the noise contour makes that site obviously less suitable for residential development. And I'm also kind of trying to think ahead here for when we deal with the urban growth boundary, metro jurisdictional boundary issue. Just kind of, if we expand the urban growth boundary anywhere closer to the airport, it might make the airport a little easier to deal with. I don't know, but kind of intuitively, I get that sense. The Russell Creek Basin site has the advantage of being right next to that freeway interchange for those industries that need access to and from I-5 in a hurry. Seems to me, though, that there's infrastructure issues with sewer out there. I don't know if that can be overcome, or if industrial development gets out there, if it then generates that threshold to connect LCC as well to the sanitary system. I'm with Rick. The northeast piece, probably not suitable for industrial development, but boy, you know, in terms of if we have to expand the urban growth boundary anywhere, that makes the most sense for decreasing sprawl. I mean, just filling in from Game Farm Road to the freeway seems the more natural area to develop than pushing it out in any other direction. I mean, that's, in a sense, one big chunk of infill area there that we ought to be looking at, I think, for some sort of purpose. So, that's my two cents worth. Probably not industrial, though, if there's transportation issues.
Silence?
Sounds like that's our input.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Did you hook us up on a link to the JEO report?
Yes, yeah.
I don't even remember reading it, but I think I read the draft.
That would be helpful, yeah.
I think I read the draft.
So, are there any items from staff?
Just that council has on their agenda this evening to consider the planning commission vacancy appointment. I don't know who the candidates are, they don't have a specific slate yet.
Really?
It's come from the original pool.
Oh, okay.
But I believe somebody will be making a nomination, they'll be acting one way or the other, so I'll let you know.
The only other thing is, we are having a public open house today at the atrium, and that is from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the topic of that is specifically our public land need and our single-family land need. So, there'll be lots of maps and staff on hand to help.
Will we be leaving TRG early so we can go down and join them?
We'll also be simultaneously at council at 5:30, so we're cloning ourselves, which is why we're all wearing blacks, you can't really tell who's who.
We have a long TRG today, too.
Yeah, we're there till 5:00, so you can pop down after 5:00, yeah.
So, does the union approve your dress codes rules?
Well, we have, you mentioned food, sort of food supplies and things like that, will part of that be at the open house? We talked about the food industry, and you referred to Nikosi as a perfect example.
We need to be featuring our local industries more, our local food companies more, right?
It would be nice.
Excellent idea.
Would you like a motion?
Any items from?
Equal opportunity, yeah.
Any items from commissioners? Commissioner Randall.
Well, just to add to the evening's entertainment, there's also a climate and energy action plan workshop at EWEB tonight from 6:00 till 8:30, so...
Is there such a thing as a community?
If anyone would like to come to that, that'll be available for your evening also.
Try to keep up the progress.
Where's that at again?
EWEB. In one of the meeting rooms.
There is, and there's actually, sorry, Commissioner Duncan asked if there's some kind of a community calendar, and we actually do keep a citywide calendar, and just, we didn't, we didn't intentionally schedule tonight's planning, tonight's city council meeting. They didn't get, because they had an Occupy Eugene item before us last Wednesday, this got carried over. So, we do typically really try to coordinate so that we don't have these kind of conflicts. And I believe that our open house is over before that one starts.
No, but is there a calendar that all the different communities, Springfield, Chamber, everybody feeds into one big calendar somewhere?
I don't know if there's one big calendar, but I know that our city webpage has one. It's a citywide calendar.
You're promoting regional planning, Rick? You're promoting regional planning? Commissioner Belcher.
And if you have nothing else...
We can't talk about things like that for some reason.
You have nothing else, the River Road Community Organization is having their general meeting tonight, and we're discussing SCROL, which is a potentially land use issue as well. So, SCROL, Santa Clara River Road Outreach and Learning, to deal with the half of us that are in the county and half of us that are in the city, and the challenges that creates, land use, governance, transportation, recreation.
Calendar coordination.
Any other items from commissioners? I guess a reminder, we have a public hearing tomorrow night?
Yes, we do. I will not be there. Where is it?
Where is it?
Uh, good question.
I think on the calendar, it showed it here.
Typically, it's over there. We'll send out a file, I don't have it in front of me, sorry. I could probably pull it up fairly quickly, if you want to stall for a second.
And does that start at the regular time, or did I recall it's at 5:30? I think there's an early start on that, isn't there?
Boy, I have 6:00.
6:00, well...
But I have 5:30 dinner is available, and then I think the public hearing starts at 6:00.
Yeah.
I'm about to pull it up.
I think it said McNutt, but...
Is there hopeful recommendation or final action tomorrow night?
I'm going to see what I can pull up for you here.
I think Alless is optimistic that that will be the case.
6:00 p.m. in City Hall.
She dismisses herself.
Yeah. I don't have the agenda, but, I mean, I don't have the specific agenda whether action was expected or not. 6:00 across the way.
City Hall.
Yep.
Are there any other items? All right, thank you all.